All right, good evening, everybody. Call to order to the council meeting, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, at five thirty P M. Susan, would you please take roll call?
Congressman Halliwell?
Present.
Congressman Barton?
Here.
Congressman Varga?
Present.
Congressman Halverson?
Present.
Mary Lane?
Here.
Council, I look for a motion to adopt the agenda. You have a couple additions in front of you here, so we're gonna add. Well, first thing we're gonna do, Stephanie is gonna take over for Chief Boukka on number five. She's not here, so she'll take those. And then we have the two additions under Stephanie, so we'll put her after Devon, so she will be item E. And I'll be F. First item under Stephanie will be Resolution zero nine two five dash eight two. Resent Resolution zero seven two five dash five nine. And Resolution zero nine two five dash eight three, authorizing the conveyance of land. And under myself, we're gonna be adding a letter of support for key honesty of action to the House of Chisholm. So with those additions, I would look, um... Excuse me. Gosh, trying to get a credit where credit is due. United Way Day of Action. So with those additions, I look for a motion.
Make a motion.
Second, thank you, Jed and Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Think I almost gave full on another thing to do. Okay, public participation. Jed, any other?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to council reports, I'll start with you, Senator Halliwell.
Good evening. I attended the last Public Utilities Commission meeting, the safety meeting, our sanitary sewer district meeting. Um, or this, our recent alley, uh, meeting as well. Also, I was able to kind of roundtable today with the Minnesota Legislative Exchange. How about tourism, posing, mining, and, uh, animals.
Will I make a form for your decision? Congressman Vargas, evening.
Good evening, uh, just a couple of things, um, further in the package. We're gonna approve street closure for the pub crawl. It's a brand new chamber event. If you like Halloween, your Halloween can kick off early next Saturday. Um, join the first ever Halloween zombie pub crawl here in Chisholm and Beale. Um, there'll be a bus that takes in groups to Beale and back. Um, because there's a couple of Chamber members in Beale now who are participating. Um, aside from that, it's obviously school season. Keep that in mind, um, you know, slower around, around town, kids popping it out, see a lot more. And just an update, um, the school project, very exciting. You can see the windows are up and we're making some progress. So the plan is still January twenty twenty six for that to, to be, uh, open. So exciting things happening.
Thank you, Josh. Congressman Varga, good evening.
Good evening. Um, just a very short report. I attended the Museum of Mining meeting on Monday. Had a good meal of Valentines prior. That will probably be our last meeting. We moved to the castle next year, next month, the things are moved, moving to Valentines also. Not much going on. They're gonna try to open, uh, for what's the day everybody shops? Black Friday or Black Saturday or something?
Oh, sure.
They're gonna be open for that, I guess. So make sure you drive down there, see if they're wrong. No, I'm wrong. M E A. That's, that's it. Not Black Friday.
Thank you, Jim. Congressman Halverson?
Good evening. We've had a working session on the last week and the public hearing here tonight and also yesterday.
Thank you. All right, it's brief update from the H R A. I'm working at, on going through and updating our, um, bylaws. Uh, revamping our director over there has been working very diligently. Make sure to kind of get us out of that state that we were in, the trouble. Um, Joe was fantastic, I think, to work with. Um, we're going through and reassessing, uh, utility rates and, um, uh, even the cost of living rates. But things that we're changing are also in... We're changing the fact where people are able to use those increases to help offset with other different type of subsidies that they're able to allow. So, um, you know, just trying to get up to date with everything that hasn't been done in a long time. So things have been very active over there. And that's all I got. Moving on, ambulance director. Tiffany, good evening.
Good evening, I just have a couple of updates on, uh, what we've got going on. Our, our event season isn't actually over. It turns out we're doing the Delta Safety Fair later this month and early next month. We have, uh, been invited to a STEM conference in Hibbing we plan on attending. So that's exciting to be able to get a part of some stuff in the community still. On top of that, our calls are still trending upwards. I figured out it was five point six percent above last year at this time, um, which leads me to, we are still accepting applications for the right, uh, person or three to come help us out with those calls and join our team. Um, other than that, I just have, what's in the agenda for some questions?
I have a question. I have a question. I didn't hear what kind of conference you're on to.
STEM. So that's, uh, science and engineering. Yep.
I just, I just didn't hear.
And they're actually, um, opening it up so we can bring the ambulance in there so we'll be able to show ambulance three off to everybody with all of its gadgets. Yeah.
City engineer, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to give you a couple of quick updates. Uh, next, um, Wednesday morning at eleven thirty, we'll be receiving bids on our, uh, twenty twenty five alley reconditioning, uh, project. And I think I had mentioned before that, uh, we've opened the completion date on that just so we can take advantage of as good a prices as we can. Uh, basically, we're looking for the project to be completed by June thirtieth of next year. If someone can get in and do it this fall, fine, but typically by tune this and concrete contractors are loaded to the gills. And we know we have problems getting them in to get that stuff finished. So, uh, they may do part of it or all of it this fall, or all or part of it, uh, next spring. But then the other thing, uh, with regards to the ice arena, we're having our weekly construction status meetings. Uh, the floor in the curling club is, uh, poured and I think is very near its curing period of twenty eight days. And I think it was two weeks ago, they poured the floor in the ice arena and that has to go twenty eight days of curing. So that's, uh, early into next month. And then after that, they can put up the east ceilings. Um, right now, they are installing the, uh, refrigeration piping from the ice arena to the curling club. And that's moving along well. So, uh, our contractor with regards to the driveway and parking lot improvements was anticipating moving their crews in either late today or first thing tomorrow morning. So it looks coordination wise, uh, that the two are working well with each other. So the push now is to get our contractor to install some curb and gutter on the southeast corner of that near their refrigeration room. So they can pour their concrete pad where they've got their equipment mounted on the exterior of the building at that southeast corner. So, uh, just a quick update on a couple of things to make you aware of, after answering questions that you might have.
Did they get that, uh, pipe put in all the way in?
Uh, they were installing, infusing the last of it, uh, this afternoon, Jim. And then they've just got to do the insulation of it. Uh, they got cleared to the east end of our proposed parking lot and we're heading north, which got them out of our way before we're doing the parking lot improvement. And, uh, so I think by the end of this week or early next week, they anticipate having that, those two refrigeration pipes insulated and backfilled and covered. Thank you.
Parks Trail is right there. No, they call it Park, Mr. Mayor. Home? Library supervisor. Katie, good evening.
All right, good evening, everyone. Um, I did want to provide a quick update on the flooding repair projects at the library. The mitigation repairs have been successfully completed. Larry and his crew, um, just did a great job finishing off the install of the fence around the newly poured concrete, um, and also the air conditioner unit. So water is now moving away from the building, which is wonderful. Um, work in the basement began this week. Um, they've successfully sealed the walls in the basement and now they're in the process of rebuilding some shelves and some flooring, which will be likely completed in the next few weeks. Um, next week, we have a full slate of programming. Monday, we have our first Maker Monday, which is geared towards fourth through sixth graders. Um, Debbie and Michelle have been working hard in planning and preparing for this program on a day that the kids are out of school. Tuesday is our monthly book club. Um, our numbers are interest for the book club were continuing to rise. And last month, we had, um, fifteen adults participating. And then Wednesdays are still our story times and participation for that is always a good. Um, on Friday, we're excited to host a special, uh, visit. The Arrowhead Library System has bi-monthly meetings for staff across the region. And as part of their new meeting structure, um, they're incorporating field trips to different libraries. And we're honored at the Chisholm Library to be chosen as the first destination. So next Friday, we'll be welcoming library staff from across the region, um, and just for them to check out our space and see some of the projects that we've got going on at the Chisholm Library. That's it. Thanks.
The attorney, Brian. Mayor, no formal report, but I'm happy to field questions if they're on. City clerk treasurer, Devin.
Good evening. Good evening. Uh, at the budget meeting, I handed out, uh, the audit report. And we have Jeff Sterling here to present the, uh, twenty twenty four audit report.
Um, there is a, the audit report is seventy two pages long and I'm guessing you don't want me to read every page. So I'll just try to cover some of the highlights for there and, and open up for questions on the end here. Um, for starters, the, um, the audit report itself is two pages plus. One of the best I'll settle is it just basically tells you that the, it's a clean audit report. Once again, that there are no, everything's in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's a good thing and that's all I'm gonna say about the report itself. The financial side of things, um, the city went through, I shouldn't say went through, but spent about ten million dollars on capital related items last year. And the amazing part of that is spending ten million and you only made a dent of one point seven million into your fund balances. So, you know, you don't see that too often. Your staff did a lot of good job finding free money out there to do things. So it didn't really cost the city a heck of a lot of money. So, um, like, so that's, don't see that too often. Um, overall, the, as far as the funds themselves go, the general fund itself dipped down by about two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars for the year. Capital projects, the permanent improvement fund was about nine hundred and fifty two thousand. That basically was your, your public safety building. And, um, the other big one is the, under your total major, other non-major funds. You had some money from federal money through the CARES program and that money got spent this last year. And that basically, for the most part, was, was used on, on, related to the, to the, um, ambulance service. So, so overall, um, you know, we had a ten point million dollars capital additions. Once again, our cash overall citywide went from about ten and a half million cash investments to, to nine point four. So like I said, based on the capital improvements you did, that, that's pretty remarkable for a city to do. Um, even with that spending, you know, you typically look at, um, you always want to sit at a minimum of three to four months of, of expenditures in your fund balance for your general fund. You've still got a little bit in excess of a year on there. So your, your, your fund balance in the general fund is very healthy. Um, I'm gonna just touch on a couple of things with the, um, your enterprise funds, garbage, water, sewer and campground. The, um, the, other than the water fund, the, the funds themselves are holding their own as far as cash is healthy in those funds. The water fund basically had to dip in a little bit, about a hundred and forty five thousand borrowed from other funds. And that shortage mainly was because of the timing of your street project and the timing of getting in the, um, the loan money from P F As. So that should have basically corrected itself, that shortage coming, you know, shortly into, into two thousand twenty five. The, um, overall, as far as the bottom line for things, garbage fund, um, ended up about a hundred and five, a hundred and six thousand dollars to the positive. Um, the water fund, a hundred and thirty five thousand. And the sewer had a little bit of a loss, ninety eight thousand, um, but off a hundred and one point eight million, you know. You don't like to see it, but it's a little dimple compared to overall operations. And the campground made forty four thousand dollars, um, uh, for the year. The, um, I'll just skip to one thing here before I move on to the rest of the report is, um, you had a question regarding the TIF fund. And basically, um, when I heard the question about the TIF fund, you, there are two TIF funds out there. Um, and they're both school related. One's Roosevelt School, one's the Lincoln School. The Lincoln School is the one that you're, you're asking about. And that TIF district, even though the, the fund itself is labeled, uh, the TIF fund, TIF District One, that TIF district basically died out a number of years ago. But the thing that lingers in, the name was never changed for that. So you do have that, that, um, seven hundred and forty eight thousand dollar loan that was made to the original developers when they did the Lincoln School project. And, uh, the terms of that loan basically said, we're gonna, we're gonna basically have a maturity date that basically, there were like three different maturity dates. But the, um, the, the maturity date, there was one in twenty four and there's another one in twenty five. And basically, under that, that agreement, as long as, and I should back up for a second. The original developer had the original agreement and then when the H R A took over the building, they took over that loan agreement. And basically, the loan agreement, the bottom line is, as long as there's still, have bodies in there that they're paying rent. The city basically agreed that as long as we've got some rental property there in the year two thousand twenty four, year two thousand twenty five. And, and I don't remember when that, it's about a hundred years ago that that loan was originally set up. But anyway, as long as that, as long as they're, they're renting, if the city is then basically can, will, is required to forgive the loan. The thing that, that we were missing and making part of that loan disappear from the audit. Um, the auditors can't see, sprinkle a holy while your loan is forgiven and that's it. It needs to come from the council to make those formal recommendations to basically notify the H R A that you're off the hook, you met the term. So that's the, that's the kind of the gist of it. And, um, any questions on that, that part of it?
Is it a matter of regardless of the owner of the building? Because then that Roosevelt, for example, switch owners?
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think he switched homeowners a couple of times early on too. I think there's someone else took over, but basically the loan agreement kept on following. And the last, the current owner is the H R A. So it's just a matter of, of basically, they would like to get that off their books too, I'm sure, so.
Both schools have the same loan terms and the...
No, 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 no. No, that was that. That, we're just talking about the Lincoln, the, uh, the, the Roosevelt never had anything, anything, you know, big dollars like that out there, no forgivable loans. So it was just basically, uh, um, basically there, there was a loan related to the Roosevelt School that was a pay as you go loan. So as long as you had money coming in for the district, you're required to pay back or to advance them to cover part of their project costs. And what happened with that one is as long as we're talking TIF districts, that thing was humming along just fine until the, I don't remember how many years ago it is now, that the county said, um, oops. Um, we kind of got some issues here as, as far as the defining the, the district, um, geography, I think, is basically what the, the whole deal was. And basically, instead of getting the, you know, fifteen, twenty five thousand, whatever it was back then, now the thing has shrunk to just basically a, you know, grand or two of, of money coming in for that district. So that money's just been kind of in limbo now, just eaten up part of it by administrative costs. So, so basically, you know, that, um, isn't a, since it's more or less dead because there's no real significant money coming through, is eventually it'll die off on its own. I don't have that in front of me as far as when the maturity of that, of that district is. But, you know, you could just as well kill off the district now and, and be done with it because it's really serving no purpose right now. And you only got two TIF districts, so I can't answer questions on the third. So that cover the...
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, just a couple of other quick points for you before I get out of your hair here. As long, along with the, um, the financial statement audit itself, um, whenever a city expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Fed funds, you're required to have what's called a single audit, which is basically additional work over and above the financial statements themselves. And that report is included part of, of this report. Last year, you ended up with about one, one point three, uh, billion dollars in Fed funds. So again, we were required to have a single audit. That number is gonna ratchet up to a million dollars, um, requirement come now, um, I believe in two thousand twenty five. I, I believe that goes into effect. So whether or not you'll have one next year, I don't know where you'll be sitting with that. You're close based on the million dollar level, so I'm not sure where you'll, you'll, uh, shake out for the next year. Um, also, in addition to the single audit, there also is requirement from the Minnesota, uh, uh, State Auditor's Office that we have to go through and, and do what's called a, uh, Minnesota legal compliance, um, uh, compliance testing for the audit. And basically that, um, for the, for this year, there were no issues, so you came out clean with, with that. And then the only other thing I'll mention is findings. And in two thousand twenty three, um, you had some issues, not big issues, but, but with Devon coming on the scene, two thirds of your problems disappear. Of course, you only had three items last in two thousand twenty three. Now you're down to one. But, um, and, um, in two thousand twenty three, you got caught with, um, every now and then it happens that the banks are required to have collateral in case they go, um, down the tubes and over an excess of their FDIC coverage. You're a little short in twenty, in twenty three. This year, um, we came out clean with that. You had plenty of collateral for that. The, um, the one item that will never disappear for you, um, just because of the size of the city is, we still do have the lack of segregation duties just because you don't have enough manpower to have a perfect set of internal controls. And the one, the one that, the other one of the three that disappeared from last year is, and Devon can take credit for this one because, um, in a perfect world, when we, when an auditor does the audit, they, we come in, we do a bunch of testing and, and then we write up our audit report. And the client does all the financial statements and we just attach the report to that. In the past, you did, the city's never had anybody with, with background capabilities to do those financial statements. But based on Devon's background, um, we did force him to do the financial statements as far, it's actually more efficient for us to do it. But, but because he has the capability to do that, we no longer have to put, um, that finding into the report. So you're down to just the one report or the one, one issue. Like I said, that one's never gonna go away. The, just the lack of segregation of duties. So, uh, that's all I really wanted to touch on, but happy to answer questions.
Any questions? I think, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks. We'll see you.
Devon, anything to add?
Uh, no, just anybody have any questions for me? Good work, Devon.
Do you administer?
Good evening, uh, just a quick update. As Jed said, they have the Minnesota Legislative Exchange today. This morning, they were, had N B C and Redman. So I worked with Sherf Hunger on that, the executive director of N B C. So we had a good day with them. Um, yeah, it was a nice morning. I was a little weary of the fog, but there wasn't any, so it all looked good. In the E D A aspects, um, I've been working a lot with Bob Streeter on the downtown. Um, we're doing an inventory of downtown, getting our buildings, uh, the city of E D A owns, ready to sell. So we're working on that and meeting with him tomorrow. We're also going through, we had done a survey, so in business owners that need improvements that are building or looking to sell or, um, we would ship that to those folks too. So that's, he's starting, he's going to have answers, questions for you.
Questions for Stephanie? Moving on, council, I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes a list of bills, communications, resignations and retirements, minutes of previous council meeting and payroll in overtime.
How many for both of you?
Thank you, Travis. Support, thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Having no unfinished business, moving on, new business, ambulance director, Tiffany.
Hello again. Um, I have two things on the agenda today. The first one is a request to purchase three new cardiac monitors. These would be from Zoll, um, and they would replace the three life packs that we have that are made by Stryker. Monitors that we have, uh, have, we've had them for a long time, the style of monitor. I believe in switching to A L S and providing a higher level of care. We are asking more out of our current monitors and they're able to give us, um, so we'd like to upgrade to something that makes us more confident in doing our jobs.
Okay, uh, we kind of went into detail over these, uh, during our, um, budget meeting. Uh, if anyone has any questions for Tiffany regarding these, uh, pieces of equipment. Um, Brian, have we, everyone on the right side of you needs to explain, right? So quiet, I'm over here. Um, Jim, I'm not sure if you have any questions for Tiffany regarding these. This is, we were to find from reserve and from...
This, um, the monitors would be reserved.
So the, the quote does have a sunset date of the end of this month. I think we just have to have our signature that we're going to or we're not going to by the end of the month. And then they are usually pretty good at working on when we're going to pay.
Okay. All right, so if there's no other questions, I look for a motion and support. Motion, thank you, Jim. Support, thank you, Marty. You may do a roll call vote. Good. Please.
Congressman Halliwell?
Stand.
Congressman Barton?
Stand.
Congressman Varga?
E.
Congressman Halverson?
Aye.
And Mary Lane?
Stand. Motion carries. Moving on.
Thank you for that, my staff also thanks you. Sorry, some of them had to dip. Um, the next thing we have is a request for, you're right, more money. Um, so one of the cots that we inherited, uh, is nineteen years old. They have an expected lifespan of seven to ten years. Um, to put into, uh, just like how old this cot is, the, the person that does P M's on these cots has never worked on a nineteen year old cot before. Um, and it's too old to even put a warranty on. Uh, so we've been with Stryker a long time. They were able to find us a demo cot for twenty thousand dollars, including two batteries and a charger. Um, we specked out a new cot at the beginning of this year and it came in at right around forty one thousand dollars. Uh, so I do believe this is a very good deal. He's already given us the cot, it's in service, so we are able to keep all three ambulances in service. Otherwise, we would be down on ambulance right now, um, due to it being a demo, we can use it before we pay for it. I'll just add on this one, um, we do have contingency and Mr. President.
And also mention, you know, they gave us the, gave us the, um, demo cot to use, obviously with the understanding that if we did not approve it, then it would go back to them. But they went out of their way to make sure that they kept our, in service. So very good, uh, customer relationship, obviously.
Was it maybe the next day that we got the cot in service? We had three calls drop within nine minutes. So, um, it is important for us to have those three ambulances up and running.
There's no other, um, questions? I look for a motion and support. I, I have a question. Not that Tiffany's gonna know, but why do we suppose that the cot was nineteen years old and we weren't told about it?
Even when I was on council first line, that they needed a new, that was over ten years. So I, I had to think a lot of the equipment was old and outdated and.
I have a very interesting highlighted list of the, the pieces of equipment that we've inherited that are beyond their expected lifespan. I've been working with Devon to put something together to, so we can have the monies put aside. So it's not a surprise when we have to buy something like this. The power loads that are in each cot, those are thirty-five thousand dollars apiece. Obviously, you're seeing the price of the cardiac monitors and that's after a twenty percent discount they're giving us as a preferred customer, even though we're not one yet. It's medical equipment, it's all very expensive. But I am working on getting that together with Devon.
I'll look for a motion and support of the purchase of the, um, Stryker demo cot. Motion, thank you Jim. Support, thank you Marty. Susan, would you please?
Councilor Halligel.
Abstain.
Councilor Halton. Councilor Lasky.
Abstain.
Councilor Marga.
Aye.
Councilor Halvishen.
Aye.
Mary Lee.
Abstain. Motion carries. Thank you council, thank you Tiffany.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Stephanie, we'll pick, uh, Jim's, um, black holes here.
The gambling commission, which is myself, Councilor Lasky and Chief Huppa has approved the following gambling, um, requests. These are just informational items for the council.
Thank you Stephanie. Any questions on these? Moving on. Sir Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor members of council. If you'll turn to page twenty-nine and thirty, please. First item we have is change order number five on last year's Fifth Street South project. And this is just, uh, formalizing the liquidated damages, uh, in the amount of two thousand dollars that was discussed at our work session at the end of last month. So I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but would recommend, uh, approval of change order number five. And then we'll go on to the final pay application for that project. Thank you.
Jim. I counsel any questions for Jim? Now I look for a motion and support to approve change order number five.
Make a motion.
Thank you Jim. Thank you Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you. And then if you'll turn to pages thirty-one, uh, thirty-two and thirty-three, what we have is pay application number thirteen, which is the final pay application for last year's Fifth Street South, uh, infrastructure replacement project. And, uh, all this really is doing is releasing that final two percent less the two thousand dollars in liquidated damages. So we, uh, get to a final, uh, total, uh, construction cost of two million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and sixty-seven cents, which you see on page three, thirty-three, excuse me, uh, in that right-hand column in the top half of the page. And, um, uh, then as you see, the amount due, uh, less the previous payments, uh, is at forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents. And with your approval of this, uh, we will be accepting the project and then commencing the one-year warranty period on this project. And with this being done, then, uh, Devon and I and Stephanie can proceed to submit our final reimbursement applications to PFA, to get this project, help it get financed. So with that, I would be happy to, and be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but would recommend approval of pay application number thirteen, uh, in the amount of forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, look for a motion and support.
Motion.
Thank you Marty. Support. Thank you Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you. Let's see. Then, um, the next, uh, is page thirty-seven, I believe, if I'm not skipping over, which is resolution oh nine twenty-five dash seventy-nine, adopting the assessments for the street reconditioning project that we held the assessment hearing on, uh, earlier this evening. I didn't read with, uh, the gentleman, I don't remember his name. And I had taken, uh, the assessment in that particular block, uh, a couple lots too far. Part of that was that took it to the west edge of the Western Edition Platte. And across the street from Mr. Dragusich, uh, was another property owner named Sherry Miller, who owned two parcels and, uh, by, uh, Mr. Dragusich should have been, his three lots should have been deleted. But it also meant deleting one of Sherry Miller's two lots. In fact, it deletes the lot that her house is on, but includes the lot that her garage is on. So what that has as a final that I'll, uh, work through with Denise in terms of certifying these assessments. Between those two lots, uh, it reduces the, it's actually side front footage in both cases. Uh, it reduces that side front footage by a hundred and seventy-four feet and reduces the amount being assessed by eight hundred and seventy dollars. Such that the assessment revenues now would be sixty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars, eight hundred and seventy dollars, less than what I presented tonight. And then the city's cost increases by that same eight hundred and seventy dollars, uh, to be a hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. With those revisions to the assessment role, I would recommend approval, uh, of this resolution. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What about the, the next, if somebody's, uh, since we usually go like a half block over, so if half a block over, someone has three lots, we don't assess them. Part of that.
Typically, that's where I exercise is most of that lot. I, I only want to do the full parcel. I don't want to assess forty-five out of ninety feet or something, that's one parcel. So depending where it lies, there's more of that property inside the assessment, boundary or area of benefit or outside of it, and then I make a judgment call. I don't want to partially assess my property because it'll get missed or duplicated down the road, so.
The council's, there's no, isn't any questions? I'll look for a motion to approve resolution zero nine two-five dash seven-nine with the corrections that, uh, Jim will make.
Make a motion.
Thank you Jim.
Post.
Thank you Travis. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Maybe if you'll turn over to page thirty-nine, uh, this is at Ice Arena, driveway and parking lot improvement that the contractor TNT plans to start either late today or tomorrow morning, probably tomorrow morning is my guess. It is change order number one, which does include the geotextile fabric, uh, that was requested at the time we accepted the bids, but what had not been bid. And it also includes a couple, uh, items in terms of, uh, storm sewer erosion control protection. It does include, uh, if you look at page forty-one, um, as the fifth item is there's some washed river rock that we were looking at putting that, uh, on the south side of the building, between the building and the curb and gutter for the driveway that we're putting in. But, um, quite frankly, we, I don't think we're going to use it. I think, uh, we need to make something impervious. Larry and I have been looking at different alternatives from sodding to actually putting in an inch and a half of bituminous in there, such that it drains from the building towards that curb, uh, such that there's virtually no maintenance to it and it's impervious and gets the water to the curb and gutter. And under that, we have storm sewer catch basins as well as drain tile. But for purposes, it, it at least gives us unit prices on that, should we, uh, want to use it. So with that, I would, uh, recommend approval of change order number one in the total amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Again, it's a unit price bid, so whatever we use, we pay for, whatever we don't, we don't pay for. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, direct any questions? I look for a motion and support for change order number one, Ice Arena driveway and parking lot improvement.
The, this is all signed, the geotechnics requested by council.
So Jim, this is a highs and goals, we're kind of, if they have to, and it was more or something, in more or?
Yeah, it's just like the rest of the bid, Jim, because we've got some other items in there. For instance, they had striping for the park, uh, parking lot. And I think, uh, I don't think we want the layout that they're proposing. And I'll do the layout of that and we'll have the city crews do the painting when we disturb there. Wherever we can save money, we're going to be saving on this project. So it's a unit price bid, just like our infrastructure projects. So again, whatever is installed, uh, will be paid for, whatever's not, uh, we will not be paying for it. Their estimated quantity is estimated cost, Jim.
Can you explain the geotextile fabric? What's it, what's it do?
This one, uh, there's two different products. Well, we bid one, uh, as part of that project, which was the geotextile, which is really like a landscape type fabric. And it's really just a separation fabric that we put between the native soils that we're compacting before we start to build the aggregate base. And it's just to keep clays and those types of materials from contaminating and creating potholes in that aggregate base. And then the GeoGrid is a more of a structural element that we're putting up in that class seven layer. Typically, right in, usually we've got about six to eight to ten inches of class seven, depending on the, uh, tonnage that we're designing for on that. And typically, uh, once we put in curb and gutter, it typically goes in at that point. And there's another three or four inches of class seven that goes on before the, um, bituminous is placed. And basically, it's a structural fabric that is holding the bituminous together. And we're seeing a lot less, um, cracking, uh, crack sealing and seal coating as we move forward. And the other thing, uh, as a result of starting to use this, uh, I was involved, recommended a study and it was done. Uh, originally, we weren't getting any credit, what they call granular equivalency, which is, there's a number given to gravel of one per inch and bituminous is like two granular equivalents per inch or something like this. And originally, we weren't getting any credit towards that granular equivalency. But through that testing that was done through the Minnesota Department of Transportation, uh, we received a granular equivalency of three. So it allowed us to reduce some bituminous and/or gravel. And very, quite frankly, it's a very economical, uh, much more economical than either bituminous or gravel right now. So it became a very good economic structural fabric for us as well as, uh, lowering our thickness and so forth. We're able to reduce the quantity of gravel and/or bituminous because we can use that grid of, with that granular equivalency of three. I apologize for my engineering terms, but, but it replaces inches of, well, it would replace three inches of gravel or about, uh, another inch of bituminous is about the equivalency. Another inch and a half of bituminous is replaced by using this. And it's much more economical. I think we're paying about three or four dollars per square yard on it. It's, it's very economical.
So we can actually reduce this price then overall of bituminous and gravel? So they said you can reduce this amount, this is the price then?
It was included in the design, just not included in the bid price, Jim. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
To provide you later, we're in force. So the performance is much improved, it's way less cracking. The crack development is significantly less, which means it's a bigger surprise.
Spending a lot less money on.
If it's shot in twenty years, we have to do it over in twenty years. In twenty years, the boomers, it can be more expensive and less green. The last forty years without being over, it's, it's a good value. In the long term, if they do get all of the new street construction and install a new pavement, hopefully it's worth it. For the longevity of the project. And save future disasters, I'd say, no.
Save our mon, maintenance dollars on the new bituminous that we're trying to keep in good driving condition, trying to keep the water from getting into that subgrade.
And we've used the GeoGrid before itself.
It's a standard, it's a, it's a standard for us now, especially since we got that granular equivalency, we're, we're getting credit for it now.
It's really a misnomered called geotextile fabric.
Yeah, the, the, yeah. The one, the lower, excuse me.
JPJ tends to call it the type six fabric.
Yeah, the, it's, it's referred to, I think, as a geotextile fabric, that one that we have at the lower, which is really just a separation fabric, that's very much like landscaping fabric. But this one is more of a structural element and it's a biaxial, it's a triaxial, it's the two-dimensional or three-dimensional. But it's a structural element. It's a, yeah, it's a.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, no further questions? I look for a motion and support to approve change order number one, question number one, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Make a motion.
Second. Thank you Jim. Thank you Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, Mayor members of council. And if you'll turn to page forty-two, please. I was approached, uh, by some, as a citizen, quite frankly, uh, down from last year's Fifth Street South project, looking to get, uh, sidewalk that is very out of a line, tripping hazards and so forth, along First Avenue to the north and the south of Fifth Street. And that person, uh, did circulate a petition that I had presented to them. And, uh, then you see the results, uh, the, uh, the sign, signing, the people signing that petition, uh, Susan has attached as well as on page forty-four, uh, is the area of benefit outlined in orange on those three blocks, in the three hundred, yeah, three hundred, four hundred and five hundred blocks of First Avenue Southwest. Uh, with those highlighted in yellow would be the benefited footage that did sign the petition. And as I note, um, in my, uh, request for council action on forty, page forty-two, uh, it, uh, that percentage of the benefited, the benefited front footage of those that signed is just under thirty-five percent, which is required by state statute. If, if you have thirty-five percent or more, as you go through the project, it only requires a simple majority vote of the council, where if it's less than thirty-five percent, it takes a super majority. And I think in this council, it'd be four out of five, I think. Brian, if you correct me if I'm wrong. But I advise these people that, uh, uh, I'm just, I'm, I'm the messenger, I guess, I'll put it that way, that, uh, I did advise them that, uh, we are very short of funds. It may not be a priority. Uh, it may be that if they want these, they may have to find some finance, I'm totally myself. So I'm just presenting the petition to you, um, it, with where we're at in budget discussions, it may be something you want a table for consideration. I just needed to bring it forward, uh, to, uh, bring the petition forward and show you the adequacy. And from there, you can decide whether you want to move forward with the project or not. And again, it may be appropriate at this point to delay that decision unless you know that you definitely want to try and do it or you do not want to do it.
Well, I think we should, um, we're gonna redo sidewalks, we should definitely have a plan of how we're gonna redo sidewalks. A lot of bad sidewalks in common, unfortunately. And I think it's probably something to be, uh, correct action for, if we just start looking at, uh, replacing sidewalks. But I don't think that this is something that we can just jump on and, and, um, you know, if we approve the, so resolution zero nine two-five, actually, if you're, Brian, you're planning, you have to see the situation. If we approve this, are we saying that we're looking to get the project done and, or we're just acknowledging that, um?
I believe what you're acknowledging is that the petition followed the proper procedure and that it was properly before the council. I think there's, there would still be a separate action as to whether and how the city would accomplish a project, accomplish a.
Is, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, basically, as I understand the, uh, resolution that goes with this, if you want to move forward it now, it would be authorizing probably me, I've got in there, to prepare a feasibility study, which looks at the existing conditions, look. to prepare a feasibility study, which looks at the existing conditions, looks at proposed improvements, looks at the cost, looks at the schedule, to bring back to you, and then we have to go through. You accept the feasibility, we go through a public hearing process. So there's all the usual steps that we're going through, and this would really just be authorizing that first step of accepting the petition and authorizing the preparation of a feasibility study. If I, I. And I mentioned it, I mentioned it to Devin and Stephanie as well. The last updating of our assessment policy was in twenty twenty-one. And particularly, particularly concrete products have had a remarkable increase in cost. And it may be appropriate as we move forward that we may need to be looking at our assessment policy. Do we need to be updating that rate per front foot? And then all these minor actions, if you will, which include by our assessment policy, for the front side footage of sidewalk improvements, it's at seven percent. Yeah, seven percent of that ninety dollars is based on a percentage of that overall cost. And what that results in is a cost of six dollars and thirty cents per foot. I, as a quick exercise day, because I was curious myself, basically, for that five foot width of sidewalk, it's just in construction cost, it's costing us just under forty-seven dollars a foot, and our assessment rate is six dollars and thirty cents, which covers about thirteen and a half, twelve, thirteen percent of that cost. You know, what, what can we afford to do? It's just like with our infrastructure projects now, that ninety dollars per front foot is probably, it was meant to cover about ten percent, ten to twelve percent of the cost. Now it's, right now it's covering about six percent of the cost. So it may be time for, for we as staff to look at updating our assessment policy as well, so.
So if we, what, is a feasibility study, just how do we look at it, or are we not?
That's how it's designated in one like this. I'm still registered, so I can write the report and. Not for doing the feasibility study, anyway. I probably wouldn't do the plans and specs. If we move to that stage with feasibility, I'm very capable of doing it and can do it as time permits.
Thank you, Jed. One second. Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion?
I got one thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank these people for doing the petition because it really speaks out that people care about their neighborhood and they want to see some change and want to see it looking.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Jed, for making that comment. I would encourage you, right now, to go down and drive fifth feet all the way from the lake over to Fourth Avenue. What's encouraging is last year's project. You go down through there, and people are starting to clean up. There's improvements in the project. Some of the blight is gone. They're doing a little painting, rough repairs, those types of things. So it's looking much more positive, I would say. But you're entitled to your own opinion, but I would encourage you to go down, look, see the change as a result of those infrastructure projects. Thank you, Council Mayor.
Of course, they're leaving right before I come up here.
Thank you. Uh, page forty-nine, truth and taxation, public hearing date and certification that we need to send to the county. Basically, we just need to set a date between November twenty-sixth and December twenty-ninth, I believe, to hold the truth and taxation meeting, to go over the levy. So I guess one of the dates that I selected was November twenty-sixth. However, that is right before Thanksgiving. You don't like that date?
We typically do it the first week in December, the first council meeting in December. Um, little hasn't been on the twenty-sixth, people trying to travel, you know, get ready for Thanksgiving. That'd be my only revelation there.
Yeah, I think typically we've tried to match council meeting dates. The, the only thing is like twenty-fourth, obviously, is courtesy. So, yeah, the tenth, the tenth would be the only other meeting within that timeframe.
Well, twenty-fourth will probably be rescheduled. Um, I don't know. I can do whatever, I'll be here either one, so. You want to do it, or you want to do it December tenth, or?
December tenth? Oh, yeah.
Six oh one on December tenth? Second year extended?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we don't have a similar budget on that, right? So then if there are changes prior to December, the county will have a little bit of time to consider that after this truth and taxation.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion to schedule a truth and taxation meeting for December tenth at six oh one P M. Motion. Thank you, Jed. Support. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Both. Motion carries.
Uh, next, page fifty-one, resolution number zero nine two five dash eight one, proposed city tax levy for twenty twenty-six. Uh, we had our, our first budget meeting last week, and, uh, really, we'll kind of need to hone in on capital projects moving forward and what we're going to really focus on moving forward. I guess it's just to make sure it's noted that this is, um, the, setting the maximum levy that we can levy or finalize. We can't go above and beyond it when we actually set our final levy. And so whatever decision is made today is subject to change only lower.
Like also, we kind of had some back and forth and during our budget meeting, so, um, I know a lot of the conversation kind of circled around, around fifteen percent for initial. I'm not sure how it still feels if that's adequate or if it needs to be higher or lower. I don't think it should be lower. Unfortunately, it might need to be higher.
I don't know, kind of likes fifty, or whoever said twelve point five. So for me, I mean, I think it's low personally. Um, I, I mean, if you settle on fifteen, then this, then that's fine, but I don't think it should be lower than that. Simply because it's a negotiation year, we talked about that, we talked about the, what the potential cost of the simple inflation is gonna be. Now we're having Jim look at sidewalks, which we didn't even talk about in our budget meeting, and so then probably, you know, both what area, like I, oh, I heard us talking about that. Um, you know, and then we have to try to come up with some sort of mechanism to start saving for that project, so. I think I'm, I don't think I'd vote for anything lower than fifteen, but I certainly am not afraid to go up to eighteen.
Marty. I agree with Travis, I think we better start high and work our way down, go the other way. And just because we stagger the sidewalks, we need to do it next year, we might not have money to do it next year, if we want. Go to that. As nice as it would be to do more, second half of yourself, no overlay, with them doing, they're gonna demo at school, right? That's gonna, and that's probably gonna happen over the winter and summer.
Uh, next summer.
Yeah, so I, and that's kind of why we held off there before, because we didn't want, well, a brand new overlay. So that, we, that's when we should be still put the budget up one more year. The uncertainty with P F A, I think that fifteen, eighteen percent is a good place to start. Once we find out more from P F A and, I don't know, maybe play with more, but I think it needs to be fifteen, eighteen percent. Needs to start work our way down to there.
I'm gonna go with fifteen percent, start there, record it all. And I'd be fine, I think, also, kind of sitting in the mayor's meeting at the Rams, every community is facing the same. Federal funding comes down to back of state funding, county funding, and everything, every community around us has a lot of plans in the mix. And so it's figuring out what you can get away with not doing. Um, but I, one thing that, you know, like I said during the meeting, and I know every one of the counselors echoes it too, that we're very proactive here, and the money that we do assess and levy, you know, it's going to good projects, it's going to future planning, and it's going to betterment of the community in the long haul. So, you know, at the end of the day, I'm, I'm standing with any of you at the end of this.
Yeah, so I'll just say one more comment, you know. The projects that we do, that since I've been here, it's since year seven for me, which is hard to, hard to believe, but year seven, but the projects, the money that we've used, they're all, they're visible, right? You can see the progress that we've made, and I really don't want to exclude a millimeter project from the next budget cycle. Will we end up having to do that? Maybe. But that's why I think, you know, I would encourage, even though eighteen is a high number, but that gives us a little more leeway with a potential millimeter project, getting down to assessments and things of that nature. So they're good projects, they're visual projects, even in a year where we're stuck and we don't have any money, if we can do something small, I think it's a win, so.
I think also I'd look for someone to make, uh, make a motion.
Make a motion, we said about the fifteen percent.
There's support?
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Both.
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor, lawyer, lawyer, both, you'll call, you'll call, yeah, call, Marty.
Counselor Hall, uh?
Aye.
Counselor Paul, absence, Counselor Laki?
No.
Counselor Varga?
No.
Counselor Halverson?
Aye.
Mayor Lake?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devin. Stephanie.
Good evening, um, thanks for this addition to the agenda. We just basically have a housekeeping team up here for our, for sale of property. Um, we were recording the deed, and the county just needed some, a change of language on our last resolution. So basically, we're just asking for the resolution number zero nine two five eight two to rescind resolution number zero seven two five dash five nine. This was for the purchase of the children's service tower, so done, we just have to leave this here.
Bring it up.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, Stephanie. Also, look for a motion in support for resolution zero nine two five dash eight two.
Motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion carries.
Next item I have then would be to approve resolution zero nine two five dash two three. That's operating him if a conveyance. It's just a new resolution.
Stephanie, counsel, look for a motion in support. Motion, thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Okay, first item here, uh, chamber of Congress is requesting to have the side street from Houghton Jerry's Alley on Second Avenue, Main Street, blocked off from four P M to five thirty P M October fourth, twenty twenty-five. Counsel, look for a motion in support. I'll make a motion. Thank you, Travis. Support. Do we have a city wagon festival for this event?
I'll modify that motion for the city wagon festival.
Thank you, Travis. Support. Jed, you have a minute, a second.
I'll make my second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion carries.
Zombies like to hit you in the street too, right? There's zombies around.
Chamber requests for, uh, Lake Street closure, Lake Street Trick and Treat, uh, pet parade. Get this over way early, so from Highway seventy-three North, um, Lake Street from Central up to seventy-three, from three P M to six P M, October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, Lord Lake Street Trick and Treats.
Cool.
For that one, I would look for a motion in support.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed. Support. Travis, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion carries.
I should also know on that, hey, that there's a community foundation burger bash.
Hey, counsel, next up, it's to, uh, schedule a special meeting on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, four thirty P M. This is for the, uh, the Minnesota Discovery Center kickoff discussion, that was processed for developing the vision and third option for the future of N B C. Since we have plenty of council members that wish to be there, we need to make it a special meeting. So I'll do a motion and support for that.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Second.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. Next on, uh, scheduling budget working session.
Mr. Mayor, quick question, where does that meeting happen?
In N B C. So are we looking for mid-October for the next budget meeting?
Yes.
I'll be, this one plus one more. Sure. So I think if we have one, um, the fifteenth, but over in between our two thousand meetings? Or if we want to try and do them on meetings? I don't give it to you. Is there a football game? Oh, there's a football game.
Not the item.
Should. Um. I'd say the twentieth is one of the few days that works for me besides the fifteenth. I'll be out of town.
Fourth of July.
They're gone.
What if I, early?
Uh, I worked Tuesday after we're seven.
We'll go with the fact of the night, Tommy, and we can go to seven.
Yeah. Yeah, that's mine. Five thirty P M?
No.
So, one, Council, look for a motion to set a budget working session for October seventh at five thirty P M.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Marty. Support. Yeah, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so let's look into November to have, it'll be our last working session. Would, um, November seventeenth work for everyone?
Should work for me. Is your last budget meeting, you said?
Yeah.
Okay. Works for me.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion for November seventeenth at five thirty. One second.
Thank you, Travis, thank you, Jeff. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on now, sitting so patiently before us, next up would be to appoint Rick Katula to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Rick has, um, obviously we have an opening here. Richard has a, has a task with planning and zoning, both in Hibbing and Chisum, right? Yeah, if you'd like to, you know, you're here, sit down.
Welcome, everybody, good evening, I'm Rick Katula, I'm a semi-retired registered nurse. Previous experience, sixteen years, um, City Hibbing, both Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Appeals and Adjustments. Most of those years I was chairperson. Hibbing is sixty square miles, so I did my due diligence of driving everywhere. And by tenure, we went through, uh, when the Hibbing Chisholm Airport did its expansion, uh, we did that project. We, um, kind of codified our wetlands ordinances, uh, so that's kind of a few things. We had a lot of different projects going on, so a lot of experience working D N R with projects with them. So I bring a lot of experience to you, to the city of Chisum. We moved here about eight years ago up in Lakeview. As a child, my grandfather was a couple houses from Malley's. I kind of grew up Pichols' um, the big sand, which at the time was a big sand pile. So, yes, I know the city really well. Mandy Galley, when I was, um, chairperson, Hibbing was actually one of our staff members. We worked together really well. I've known her for a long time. And so I look forward to bringing all my experience to you and helping you with all your ventures. And I appreciate that you put me in that position. I'll do my best to, I'm an open person, I get, uh, very, get along very well with other people. You know, when you're approaching people, Jim knows when you're going on somebody's property and you don't know them from Adam in the middle of nowhere. So I've got a lot of experience too, so I hope to bring a lot to you. Any questions you might have? Okay, thank you.
I just have, I just have a statement.
Jim?
All your years of Hibbing service doesn't matter to me. You and my mental ops telling me nothing about it.
I remember that, I remember that Christmas package that I always had to hand out for many years. Thank you.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, welcome to the board. All right, last up is to approve the letter of support for United Ways North, United Way of Northeastern Minnesota Day of Action. We host in Chisum next year. Uh, this is a fantastic event. I know they were over in, um, Nashlock this year. I don't know if they, it's a very good, very great, you know, opportunity coming to Chisum, so.
They will, they will be at our next council meeting to, um, disclose more depth of what that means for Chisum. Um, but they do want to get this application into the festival support.
Council, look for a motion and support to approve the letter of support.
Motion.
Thank you, Travis. Support. Thank you, Jeff. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We could do a motion for recess to the. Council, look for a motion to recess to approve session, you comply with statute two T B one zero three, subdivision one, labor discussion, contract and certification.
Motion.
Thank you.
Yep. Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you all, everyone.